All right, everyone, it sounds like we are ready. It is 6:32 PM on Tuesday, July 11, 2023, and you're at a City of Wausau Common Council meeting. Welcome, everyone. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next up, roll call. Clerk Caitlin will get at it.
We have 11 voting members present.
I have it, yes. Thank you. All right, next up, proclamations. You can find those on our website. Really exciting stuff. Then now we have our presentation. It is an update on mall redevelopment, Foundry on Third LLC. This is from Gudorzy, Ekman, and Patterson. Welcome.
Madam Chair, I rise to appoint a privilege for the council.
What is your comment?
My comment would take about 1 minute 15 seconds. Thank you. As agendized-
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask the parliamentarian.
State your question or your motion.
Sure. As agendized here tonight, I believe the common council has standing to set some expectations and asked to tighten up the timeline on the mall project. This decision has already cost the city money and we've already taken-
That sounds like a business action to me.
We've already taken action on it tonight. We're in possession of Mr. Ekman's letter that they unilaterally accepted the T-Wall delay, so where's our say? Here, why are we here?
For a presentation.
They've already negotiated the delay and now it's just a matter of selling it to the council. I'm not looking to undermine anything here, but I want the council to have a say here.
So-
1:30 seconds here.
So I'm getting some shakes and confusion from our body here. I think maybe what the confusion is, is that we were going to listen to the presentation and then understand what our next steps are, and we don't have motion agendized tonight.
I understand, I understand. So if I can finish, it's about 30 seconds.
I'm seeing heads shaking. What are you thinking?
I'm sorry, you asked about rising to a question of privilege-
Correct.
And that's usually directed to the heat or the temperature in the room or something that's urgent, and then the chair has to determine whether the matter is urgent and something that the assembly needs to vote on. It doesn't sound like that's what you're attempting to do at this point, and I'd be concerned about compliance with the open meeting law since this is just agendized as an update and not, and as a presentation. It's not agendized for any action or discussion. When you set expectations that, to me, engenders a motion and a second and some discussion, none of that is agendized either, and I want to caution the council not to get into that sort of debate or discussion. Certainly after the presenters have made their presentation, I think the mayor would entertain questions by any of you of the presenters.
Absolutely.
But that's the purpose of the presentation.
I've received questions from a couple of alders asking if they'd be allowed to ask questions, and the answer is absolutely.
May I finish?
So-
Are you-
I'm siding with our parliamentarian that this is out of order and it is not actually a point of privilege.
Okay.
So-
Well, point of personal privilege, and I appeal the ruling of the chair, and I would ask for a roll call vote. I think the public expects transparency. The agenda doesn't provide it, unfortunately, I have to insist on it.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion, an appeal. Do I need a second or do we just vote?
To appeal it? I think they can just vote.
Okay. I don't think we can debate this, so-
There's no debate, but it should be a roll call.
I know, I'm saying we can't debate your point, your appeal. So we're waiting for the clerk to catch up. I know, everyone wants to talk, but it's not-
Is it an appeal or motion? Is it an appeal or motion?
Is it a second? Or is it, okay, all right. So we're appealing this. You get to vote yes or no if you'd like to continue, so.
Point of inquiry, what are, how are we voting here?
Do you want a roll call vote or what does yes and what does no mean?
Let's talk about this. So the appeal has been made, challenging the, my call as chair, that there's opportunity to have this point of privilege, personal privilege. So the parliamentarian has counseled me and said it doesn't fit the criteria, and I've sided with her. There is an appeal. So if you vote yes, you side with the appeal, yeah? Voting yes means, okay. If you vote yes, you are siding with the appeal and you would like to continue with the point of personal privilege. If you vote no, you are siding with the parliamentarian and my ruling. Yeah? We're good? Okay.
I have to put in a second.
Is there somebody that would be willing to put a second in? If, okay, all right, Herb's still second in.
It doesn't require a second. Okay, you may begin voting. The appeal fails 1 to 10.
Okay. So we are going to move on. The way we'll do this is that we'll have the presentation and then we'll open it up for questions from any of the body, if that sounds good. All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting us back to give you a brief update as to where we are in the mall project. I'm here with Nick Patterson. Nick will be more specific as to the Foundry on Third, and Dave will make some presentations as to some other initiatives with Wausau Opportunity Zone. I'm Chuck Gudorzy. I am managing director for the Wausau Opportunity Zone. When I've been here before, I've made reference to four initiatives that we were kind of laser focused on relative to what we wanted to accomplish in 2023. A new home front for the north elevation of the Home Furniture Store, Children's Imaginarium, our streets, and obviously Foundry on Third. Relative to the home front, when the mall came down, we were left with about 440 feet of block wall that went 24 feet high. We've designed some nice architectural features for that new storefront, about 340 feet of that will be coming down. There'll be a new entry to the Home Store that'll face Third Street. There'll be a new entry to Children's Imaginarium that will face the Green Forum. There's been some videos and some shots of that that have been out on the Chambers website. We are well on our way relative to working through the architectural issues, the engineering issues. Half of that wall is down, and we'll be continuing to take that wall down over the next week or so. The objective is to be finished with that by October, when Children's Imaginarium will be opened. One of the features of that completion on the exterior will be a sidewalk that will extend from what we'll continue to probably forever call the Sears Ramp, that'll go along home, go along Children's Imaginarium, and then out to what will be the new Second Street that will extend between Washington and Forest Street. So that's kind of where we are in the home front. I want to really thank the owners of the Home Store. There's been a lot of activity relative to walls coming down, temporary walls going up, dust, and them continuing to try to operate their business. They've been a great team member. Children's Imaginarium continues to move forward as well, 13,600 square feet that is carved out of, if you would, the northwest corner of the Home Store. That group has been very successful on raising funds for their project. Behind the plastic, which is up, is a lot of activity. HVAC contractors, all the walls are up, drywalling is occurring. They're beginning to get displays in for assembly and et cetera, and so that's moving along very nicely. They plan to open October 1, which will line up with some of the other activities as well. In December of last year, WASD did it over to the community again, about 40% of the mall site, and the city collaboratively began on designing new streets. I think we've seen the cross section of those streets, and we continue to move forward on what I think will be some exciting new streetscapes, 78 feet wide, very pedestrian-friendly. Again, there's been a tremendous effort in terms of designing those streets. The city has worked very well relative to Becker and Hoppy and some of their folks in terms of where we are. We are now set on July 17 to start on the utilities for those streets. We'll be starting on the corner of Forest and the new Second Street. We'll be working our way across the site, down Second Street, down the new Third Street, part of Jackson Street. Those utilities will be in and will have temporary street, temporary street relative to Second Street by November, if you would, when the Children's Imaginarium will open. We keep referring to those as temporary streets because we will be essentially blacktopping Second Street, but the other activities of the finished streetscape will occur in '24 and '25 as there are completions of those projects. Foundry on Third, Nick will speak more specifically to that. From WASD's perspective, we continue to be very encouraged and committed with the progress that Nick and his T-Wall team have been making. We definitely continue to support the fact that this is going to be the right development for our downtown, five-story building, 150-plus apartment units, 18,000 square feet of small retail, 131 parking spots. It is certainly the igniter, if you would, for our effort to revitalize our downtown and to bring, living, if you would, residential to the downtown. So those are our four initiatives. I think in conclusion, I would say that we continue to be very encouraged by the process. It's been a team effort, a team effort by this council, by our community, by T-Wall, by our other partners, and we look forward to seeing some of that get completed and move forward. We ask again that kind of everybody realize there's a little patience that's involved in this process. We're going to be involved with this for a few years, but our continued commitment is to stay the course and to execute on these initiatives. Thank you.
Are there more presenters? Okay.
Thanks for having me tonight. As I want to keep you guys informed as we go through the process, I thought it'd be appropriate to give you guys an update and kind of where we're at, what we're seeing right now. So where we are now in the process, we've completed our GDP and our SIP, we've completed our construction documents, and we have our lender onboard. We have a term sheet. We continue to work with the city and with Becker-Hoppy on public and private utility coordination, and we're now working with our MEP team on getting our utilities in place, our electrical, our gas calculations, so we can secure our transformer. And next process where we're at right now is the legal process of getting staff sign-offs, getting our plan review completed, and to give you, typically Madison would take 12 to 15 months for staff sign-offs and plan review. Wausau, it's looking like it's going to take several months, two to four months, but we're working through that process. It can be lengthy, but we're making progress, and we get changes, we get comments, and then we have to address those changes. So that's where we're at in the process right now, and then our next step would be to pull a building permit. And there's the development's dynamic, there's many other factors we're working on. It's not simply a step-by-step process. There's economic factors. When we first started this, interest rates were at 4%, and now they're close to 8%. So certain economic factors that we have to adapt to while working through our legal process of getting staff sign-offs and plan review so we can pull those permits. So that's where we're at right now. We're trending towards an early spring start of 2024, so that's why we wanted to get this in front of you today, to give you an update and show you where we're at and where we're at in our steps, and I'll be available for questions later.
Clerk, I'm going to give this to you.
You can go and look at the site, and you can see the activity that's taking place there. Nick has outlined, by and large, the progress that T-Wall has made and the financial environment of which we're in right now. Put simply in the terms where I think we can all understand it, if we're going to move forward and work in a banking relationship and we're going to purchase or develop a property, the equity position is critically important, just like it is for any homeowner to have that, and so the patience that's going to be required to stay the course and the time that's required to get done where we're heading. I'm sharing with you today that last year, when we went into this process, this project, we developed a website. It's called Getting Downtown, Get Downtown is Refreshing, and it's DowntownRefresh.com. This is a communication website that is accessible to all of you, in fact, as public officials to place your name on that so that as you are city officials, you can get the news feeds from this. This site is updated now. We, when we stepped into this process of the redevelopment that really began to occur in the early spring, and as we start to approach the summer months here in the downtown, we brought together economic development staff, we brought together River District, we brought together the Chamber of Commerce, WASD, Greater Wausau Prosperity Partnership, we brought together the business community downtown, knowing that as the cap was to be removed off the mall in the facade, along Home Furniture being repositioned for future, that there could be implications in terms of the dust and the communication. This became a communication piece which everybody has been involved in, and I'm encouraging you to watch this, this site. You'll all get information from it with your websites, from your city official perspectives. But why is this here? One, we want to communicate to the public, anybody, anybody in the state of Wisconsin to see what's going on in downtown Wausau, they can come and watch this. The other thing that's happening with this is this site, we're putting the updates. Here's what's going on. Here's when you see the street or the cap being removed. Here's what's going to happen because the cap's being removed. It's there. Talking to the ladies who brought to fruition the Children's Imaginarium and giving them a place to talk and present what they're doing, to talk to the merchants that are situated adjacent to the construction zone and letting them tell their stories, their life stories, their business stories. The site's here for that. Now, we're going to take a little bit, one more step further. When we start to reinvent this site, to have more granular scheduling as to, here's what's happening here this time, this date, so in anticipation for all of you that you can be informed of what's transpiring down here, for the merchants to be informed what's down here. This site is there for a tool for you to use, and if it's not providing what you need, then please let us know, and we're happy to make adaptations or adjust to what it is you require. So I wanted to make sure, you know, this is here, and we have been proactively working with the merchants on Third Street and along the 400 block and along Washington. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that the communication piece, which you deserve and you should have, it's here, and we will, if you tell us something we're missing, let us know, and we can adapt it to meet your needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open up the floor to questions. First up, I have President Magdalene.
Mr. Patterson, could I ask a couple of questions? Good evening. I guess I read the letter that came from Mr. Ekman, and I, and then it sounded, I don't know, it wasn't jiving for me, so I'm just asking you, so what you said is that you have your lender in place, that is not an issue of finding capital, correct?
Yeah, so we're working with two or three lenders to get the most competitive rates, but we have term sheets and we're taking the steps to finalize those loans.
Okay, okay, that's great. And then do you, do you expect any further delay? What would cause any further delay beyond spring of 2024?
Well, that's an interesting question right now because there's a lot of economic uncertainty, and as I said, development is dynamic, so I can't ever say, I can never guarantee you it's going to be this day. We have to adapt and change as needed, but the schedule, where we're at right now with our processes and everything, we will be in, we will begin construction spring.
Can I just ask you to expound on what you mean about the changing dynamics? If you have your lenders in place, I guess, are you looking for lower interest rates or, residents ask me this, so I need to understand, what is your pinch point in the dynamics that would cause maybe a possible delay?
Sure, yeah, so there's a number, so every, so we get bids, and bids are only held, they used to be held for six months, now they're only held for a month maybe. So the construction costs are always changing, that's one lever.
Okay.
And then you have interest rates. Last week, they were at 7.5. This, or a month from now, they could be at 7 and 3/4, and then next year, it could be 8%, 8.5. So there's, there's all these different factors that, we don't have a magic eight ball, but with our experience doing this for so long, we can, we can pick up on those trends and we can predict, but there's, there's a lot of uncontrollable factors.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question for Mr. Patterson as far as the economical things, and going back to Becky's question. He says you're working with, say, two or three different banks, but I also heard through the grapevine, or maybe it was through that letter, that there's a problem with equity right now, and what, what, why would that equity change six months down the road? Because I dabbled in property myself a little bit here and there, and you know, if you don't have equity, you can't get loan, you know, so.
Sure, yeah, so we're raising equity, there's not, so there's always a moving target, as I said, with interest rates and construction costs, but we're, we continue to get more and more equity in every day, so I don't, I don't see that as being a problem. It's just, it's always a moving target. If the interest rate goes up, then that's a smaller loan that we get, which means more equity. If construction costs go up, that's more equity in the deal. So it's always a moving target that we're adjusting to, but we continue to raise more and more every day.
Because, you know, I know you've been around town for probably two or three years now, I mean, going back to the Riverlife thing, and I guess what we've seen with you since you've been here is a whole lot of nothing, you know, and this alderman does not have a whole lot of faith in what's going on right now, and with that, I would like Mr. Gudorzy to step forward. I have a question for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Gudorzy.
Good evening.
I've been wanting to ask you this for many, 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 many months, and I feel the time is right. Why do you feel the citizens of District 10 should support this? And I'll give you one reason. Because for three years, the citizens of District 10 have been asking you to clean up a building that's in our neighborhood, and for three years, we've heard, yes, 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 yes. And for three years, you keep, continue to turn your nose to the citizens of District 10, and you know which building I'm talking about because it's not in the city of Wausau, and that's why you can get away with not fixing it. So why should the citizens of District 10 support this and support these constant delays?
Well, I don't think, I don't think your complaint about Chuck Gudorzy or his buildings have anything to do with this project. This project stands on its own. It's a project that this community needs. There is no other community in the United States that has the opportunity that we have to revitalize our downtown, and if we don't do that, okay, we're going to continue to go backwards with everybody else. So that stands on its own. Relative to the fact that every time I meet you, you talk about a white barn building, okay, that happens to be saved from the property initially. I would invite all of you to go by that property and see what Lou is talking about, and if you feel that I am disrespectful for the neighborhood, then please tell me, but we, we, as a member of District 10, spend an awful lot of time being very cognizant of what our buildings look like and how our properties are maintained. We have six people on staff that are continually doing that. So go around and look at our properties, go around and look at the courtyard, go around and look at the developments that are occurring. Well, I am giving you an indication of how we feel about the properties that we own and how we maintain them, and how much we put into them, and how proud we are that we are a part- how much we put into them and how proud we are that we are a part of the district in which you represent.
You didn't ask my, you didn't answer my question. And why would we support you when you continue, I mean, anybody that goes by this building, the city inspectors would have a field day with it.
Well, you need to do that and everybody needs to look at that.
We'll just leave it like that. Thank you.
Again, there are two different issues. Don't put this on me. This is a community issue that we're trying to move forward, not a personal issue between you and I.
This is not a personal issue between you and I. This is a personal issue between I and the districts, our neighborhood in District 10.
Thank you.
All right, Alder Denny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I'd like to thank the rest of the alders for participating in the Robert's Rules exercise here. Trust me, it's not a picnic to read. Also of note to everyone, our strategic plan under fun and vibrant community objectives, number three, is the mall project deliberately encourage and incentivize the mall redevelopment so that vibrant downtown is created. This is central to our plan. This is central to our city. So I understand, I've lived the supply chain my whole life. I understand it. When you commit to a critical project, this is a critical project. This is an important project. We and the citizens deserve a more timely understanding of the project timeline and the issues. So to speak to what Nick Patterson said is to keep us informed. And to Mr. Ekman's point about the communication piece, you know, I've got an old adage here of military and business leadership on things that are important. If you're not overcommunicating, you're undercommunicating. If you ain't overcommunicating, you're undercommunicating. And that's what happened here. It goes to everybody in leadership from council to staff to WAS to T-WALL. Somebody knew this was coming a lot sooner than this. So let's not make this into a normal piece of property or normal piece of project management. This is a high priority project. You took it on and we agreed to the timeline. Thank you. So let me just finish with also saying.
Point of order, I have a point of order that we were instructed that we were only supposed to be questions and not have a discussion on this project at this time. I mean, that came from the city attorney. I just want the parliamentarian, because we don't have it agendized as making comments.
I have some questions.
Madam Chair, you should rule on Ms. McElhany's point of order. I would recommend that, my recommendation would be that you ask him if he has a question of any of the presenters.
All right. We are ready for your questions for the presenters.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I guess my, a couple of questions then. I mean, I guess I don't know why we're procrastinating because we're already taking action later on in the agenda tonight on the budget which we had to modify to accommodate for this most recent delay. It's already costing us money. So here's the question, I guess, to Mr. Patterson. What precludes you with your current financial situation from taking possession of Lot 4, the project site, on or before Labor Day this year to show the citizens, to show the city, to show the council that you have earnest intentions?
Yeah, and as I kind of mentioned earlier, we're going through all the necessary steps to get to the point to acquire the property, to pull a permit, to start construction. We're taking all of our necessary steps and legal processes to get staff sign-offs, to go through plan review. And we can't circumvent that process. That's a necessary process. It's required. So.
Well, the agreement was made in August. So I would think the acquisition of the property is the simplest, the easiest, the least expensive piece of this project. You would show some earnest dedication to the city here. And I think that would relieve some fears that we aren't sitting here with unforeseen circumstances in April again. And that was all I was looking to do is set some expectations, or here, I should say, here's some expectations from you that would make us feel good about acquiring the property. No delays after spring of 2024 or April 15th to 25th.
Additional point of order, please. We're beyond questioning. Now we are renegotiating the terms of the development agreement in a question and answer session.
Do you mind if I rephrase the question? I think the question is, how can our community be sure that what we're doing is making progress instead of another delay that would lead to another delay that would lead to another delay? How can you assure us that this delay is the one delay and we're good to move forward?
Good question, Mayor.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, good question. So we've, we have tremendous amount of investment in this property. There's been over a year now of our staff time, a lot of money invested in this property. So we're fully on board and we're 95% to the finish line. So I appreciate you guys' patience and we're going to get there. It's, we're continuing to get there. It's just the process of going through these steps and we can't expedite that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess lastly, I just want to be clear, I'm not here trying to submarine anything. It's that this, the citizens are looking to us to add some clarity here and we should be taking the guessing game out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just say, you know, I disagree that open meetings law requires that discussion be agendized. And I do not think that is a requirement under the open meetings law. But while you're up there, Mr. Patterson, I do have a few questions. And City Pages had reported that I believe after the city council had passed the deal for the foundry development, that your company, at a much later date, was asking around town for investors for the project. I believe that's what City Pages reported. Is that accurate?
Sorry, I did not see the article, but typically equity raise, we raise from our investor pool. We have over 700 investors that we raise from. So we go out to that pool because of our, we certainly didn't start with 700 investors. We just had a few, but with our track record, we've been able to get, gather a significant amount of investors. So we go out to that pool, give them first opportunity. And then we always, in any local municipality too, we give local investors a chance to invest if they would like. But no, we pull from our typical investor pool and also our equity into the project.
Thank you. And I was here the night that that deal was voted on. I and Alder Larson were the only two present that voted against it, but it's because of certain concerns and some of them were quantitative. So is my understanding correct that when the city council passed that deal that committed $10.8 million in taxpayer monies, that at that evening, T-WALL didn't, never conveyed to the city council that it didn't have the private dollars set up at that point to follow through on the public money that was being committed? That was never brought up, was it, that there'd be a probability the private dollars wouldn't be there?
I don't know what the discussion with private dollars was, but we always have private dollars in our projects. That's a requirement by our lender. We provide the equity. We spend that cash upfront and we use, and then we use loan funds as well. So that's always a requirement, nothing unique to this project at all. So that's an expectation and a requirement by us.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the question was about the doubt or lack of confidence in acquiring private dollars in a timely fashion that coincided with the timeline expectations. And I believe I was here and it's on public access and that had not been brought up by your company. And then you mentioned that there's been economic ups and downs and changes in the interest rate and that it started at 4% when things initiated and then it went up to 8%. At the time, it was 4%. Did you anticipate that rates would go down or that the Fed would actually take activity in a manner where the rates would go down? Because if I recall, everything indicated that the actions taken were actually leading to almost inevitably higher interest rates. Were you thinking the rates would stay the same or go down?
No, I certainly didn't think they would go down. No.
Okay. And the inflation was not unexpected. It didn't happen overnight. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I think that answers my questions. Mr. Patterson, thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Ekman.
Do you mind if I, I see that Terrence Wall has his hand up.
Yes, of course.
Terrence, if you want to participate in answering this question.
Alder.
Sure.
One moment. I'm sorry. Thank you. One moment, Ms. Ekman. Terrence, we're recognizing you right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to summarize that this effort has been a huge effort of cooperation, collaboration between Was and the city and city staff. You know, we're on, to use a football analogy, we're in the red zone. We're ready to score a touchdown. And now we have a couple umpires here trying to second guess everything and make it look like it's a bad situation. This project is ready to move forward. There's a legal process that we have to go through. There's no delays in this project. We just, to give you an example, we met with the fire department, our architect met with the fire department last week to listen to what their needs are and desires are for the project. Then the architect did some research and then met with us this morning, presented the options to us. We made a call to our contractor. We're going to get the info. We'll have that answered next week. It's about a three-week process to turn around responses to the fire department. That's perfectly normal. The fire department's doing a great job, and I'm just using this as an example, of the back and forth nature of development and how we have to work together as a team. And some people here are trying to make this look like it's a bad thing, like there's something wrong with the process. There's not. Your staff's done a tremendous job. The city's done a terrific job. WAS has done a fantastic job. This project has been accelerated beyond anything ever been involved with. It's moving along at a rapid pace. There are ups and downs. People who are not involved in development don't understand the process. And if some people are suggesting that we can somehow circumvent the city ordinances that require us to go through these processes, then, you know, please let me know, because I'm not aware that we can do that. We have to follow your ordinances, your process. We're doing that. We're ready to score the touchdown. But it takes time. There's lots of bumps in the road along the way, lots of potholes, and we have to address those, pivot, and keep moving. And that's what we're doing. We're here tonight to reassure you this project is moving forward at a rapid pace. You will always hear about every step along the way. That's really the responsibility of your city staff, to keep you informed. We're keeping them informed and they're working and doing a hard job here to make this all happen. So this is a very positive project that's going to happen in the city. And let's not put up roadblocks, you know, the moment we're going to score the touchdown. You know what I mean? Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may proceed, and I'd like to clarify, I'm not an umpire. I'm the elected official for District 3 and I represent those people and constituents in District 3. Mr. Ekman?
Alder.
Thank you. And just, you had brought up kind of an item with removing some of the concrete. I think a bunch of that had been removed perhaps in, at some point in the spring. And, you know, we see some exposed soil there now. Not the entirety of the property, but a good amount. I had received some concern from someone who worked nearby the site just about that soil because I think that it had been left in place to kind of act as a cap of sorts for a soil that was presumed to be potentially contaminated in certain areas. And now that that was removed in large portions of the site, you know, and I'm not talking about the street and utilities, but kind of any areas outside of that, is there going to be some action or effort if there might be a delay of kind of unknown timeframe to make sure that any soil of concern is recovered or that there is some sort of a cap in the interim?
I can't answer that question. I can ask Chuck to come up here and help me answer that question. What I can, you know, what I can tell you is that the cap that, because I know what you're talking about, you're talking distinctly not the street portion, but where the foundry portion was going to be, correct? Just want to make sure we're on that serious.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then the soil was to be removed, right, when they started? And that wasn't going to happen until the fall. So I'm going to turn it over to him right now because he's been working closely, him more so than me, with the DNR Green Team.
Thank you.
And thank you for the question. And you're right, the cap has been removed. There is an amendment to the cap agreement that has been received. All the processes have been right on target. Everything has been informed. Eric Lindman is the lead on that along with us. So now we are ready because we are expecting that utilities could have started as early as July 1. And so that cap is now removed. Now, relative to Block 4, Block 4 is also ready for construction. And understand that not all of that, Block 4, has contaminated soil underneath it. It's only approximately half of the lot. So in talking with the DNR, if that does extend a little bit longer, then we will be recapping that with an appropriate product. And so that's a good question and it should work out just so I.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Nope, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just, I guess to respond to Mr. Wall's comment and the sports analogy, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to undermine it, anything here, but citizens need to know and it's communications. So to me, the sports analogy is that we're in round 12 of this project and some of these issues should have been talked about in round one. So, you know, we had Myron here build the wastewater treatment plant, you know, water treatment plant in the heart of COVID. They finished, there were some hiccups. We worked through them. They finished on time and they made that happen. They didn't have issues with supply chain, et cetera. So my question is, do you anticipate coming to the city for any further financial consideration, whether it be extra tid money, extra pre-development loans, or anything else of that sort? Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any further questions, but I do have a question. I think this probably is best directed at staff, Randy. My question is, what are the next steps for this body? I know that we will be probably having some committee action and then brought back to the council, but maybe you could just clarify.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the next step in the process will be looking at an amendment to the development agreement that you previously approved. Based on the delay in the project, there's some things such as timeline, commencement date that'll need to be reviewed. The hope is that we'll have that coming forward to the ED Committee in August. Council hopefully in August as well, depending on how everything works with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, thank you very much for the presentation and the questions, everyone. We are moving on now. We are on to public comment. I don't believe we've had anybody register for public comment. If you're here and you wanted to do that, there's an opportunity at the end. So next up is our consent agenda. That is file number 230501 through file number 230108. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you very much. Next- Next up, we are on to file number 230703, Mayor's Appointments. We have two. It's a reappointment of Chad Straby for our City County IT Commission and Sustainability Energy and Environment Commission with Jean Abreu. I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Watson. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. Next up is file number 230711. This is a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $11 million, point 17 in general obligation promissory note series. I'm sorry.
$11 million.
Oh, yes. $11 million, 170,000 in general obligation promissory note series 2023B. I see Phil has eliminated himself. We do have a motion by Rasmussen and a second by Lukens, but maybe I'll let you, Phil, if you have anything to share with us, we'll take it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a very quick overview of both of these issues that we discussed at the Finance Committee. We have two separate issues initially. We had one issue that was brought forward that was closer to $13 million. The first issue that you just referenced has several components to it. I'll just kind of list off the items to be financed, so everybody's aware of what will be financed with the general obligation note issue. Street projects of $3,491,000. We have TID eight projects of $2,550,000, TID 11 projects, $2.4 million, and a TID 12 projects of $2.5 billion, and then a motor pool project of $150,000 as well. Initially, we had included tax increment District Number Three as well, and TID Number Three ended up being removed from this financing, because there was a wish upon amongst the finance members to have the opportunity to sell that land, as land that would be purchased and available to be sold. And as a result of that, that would then require that issue to be taxable. The five projects actually listed for the different TIDS. TID eight is Seventeenth Avenue Street Store of Water and Sewer. TID 11 is the Business Campus Trail, and then TID 12 is the Mall Street grid project that would be financed. From a timing perspective and process, if it's authorized this evening, then we will be having a rating call with Moody's Investor Service on July 18. The sale, which would be a parameter sale, would occur on August 3, and we would provide that information to the Village Board at your, I'm sorry, the City Council at your next scheduled meeting, as long as all the parameters were met that were established in the resolution that you have in front of you that was prepared by Quarles and Brady. So that's timing. Closing on this, if, again, if it's sold on April, I'm sorry, August 3 would be, August 23 would be the estimated closing. That's when all the funds would be wired and available to the city to either reimburse costs that have already incurred or to pay for costs going forward. That's the GO note issued. Do you want me to cover the second, or do you like me to just pause it just for a minute?
Let's pause for one moment. Are there any questions on this? All right. We're going to vote on this, and then we will come back to you. One moment. Comments? No? Oh, all right. Alder Denny.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The portion for TID 12, how much of that is affected right now by the delay we just discussed here a little bit ago? Do we need to have some concerns about issuing that debt? That might be a question for Mary Ann.
Yeah. So we actually reduced the amount of borrowing between the June 13 meeting and the June 27 meeting of finance to reflect the delay. And really, most of that was soil remediation. And then also, the original budget had more work contemplated on the elevator from the Penny's ramp. And so through some additional conversations, we decided to delay that too, because we thought it would be better to wait until some of the other demolition work had taken place before we fixed that area up. So those have already been taken into account in these final numbers.
Okay. So just for the record, then, we are, as a city, taking action and making decisions based on the delay letter from Mr. Ekman that we've gotten a few weeks ago?
Yes. We've reduced our borrowing.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that's an important point that Mary Ann just made. To contemplate the timing of the project, we are essentially taking on less municipal debt this year, because the project is contemplated to take longer, so we're phasing that borrowing. So that's a good thing. We borrow less money, we take on less general obligation debt, but we still get the infrastructure grid built on time like we want it. So, you know, I think that we need to recognize that that's a positive, and that timing that borrowing, when we are ready to spend that money down and when we have the project at the phases where we need the money, makes sense. And that, we talked about that in two finance meetings, and the Finance Committee was in complete agreement about that structure. So I think it's important to remember that.
Alder Denny.
Well, it's also important to remember that we're making decisions on a guess. I mean, we're, and it's probably prudent to pull that money back, but there's no reason for this council to procrastinate on other expectations. So that was my point from earlier, and thank you.
All right. So this passed. Oh, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I just wanted to comment on those last sentiments. I would agree that I think it's a tremendous risk to be borrowing for infrastructure in a design and plan where we're seeing the type of delay we are now. And certainly, I hope that it is just a delay and that things go successfully, but we really do not know that at this point. So I too have serious concerns about building out infrastructure to essentially feed a development that we are not certain is going to materialize. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment or questions? I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 8 to 3.
All right. Thank you. We're now on to our next item, file number 230712. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $1,280,000 in taxable general obligation promissory note series 2023C. Phil, maybe you first. But we do have a motion as I go. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Same dates as when I referenced earlier, as far as the rating, the actual sale date, the closing, those will be at the same schedule as we have for the B issue. As I indicated, the TID three land purchase was pulled out of the larger issue and separated out as a taxable issue to give the city flexibility in how they treat the land. If there is the intent to sell land to a private developer, then that issue will have to be taxable. That's why we're issuing taxable bonds, preserve that flexibility for the city, and it can't be tax exempt. If we issued it as a tax exempt issue, we would have been required, if you're going to sell the land to a developer, to sell it for $1. And I think the city and Finance Committee really wanted to have that flexibility in how they were able to proceed with negotiations with the end user of the land to be purchased in TID Number Three.
All right. Thank you. Comments? Questions? Alder? Oh, go ahead, Mary Ann.
I'm just, this is going to be amortized over five years, so it's a very short note. So even though interest rates are a little higher, issuing taxable debt, because we're paying it off in half the time that we typically would, we're going to offset some of that increase.
Thank you. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the purchase of the walking path or the piece of county materials property north of Wynton Street. And I was the dissenting vote on this, because I feel we're spending money in areas now on the city that we can't, you know, we really are losing focus, and it's evidenced by what we see downtown. So I voted against this, and I'll continue to vote against it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I had voted against this in ED, and I will do so again tonight. I think that the way we borrow and spend should reflect our priorities, and right now we have some pressing priorities that I think far exceed this type of elective purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. One moment.
I would just point out that we've purchased the property. So the money has gone out the door. So if, for example, this resolution would fail for whatever reason, then basically we would just be drawing on reserves to fund the purchase. So just something to consider on your vote.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think it's important to recognize also that this isn't just a walking path. When we discussed this in committee and when we authorized the purchase, a component of that purchase was a partnership with a local business to create and preserve jobs. And so there's a operating business there that wants a portion of that property. They didn't need the entire property. And through a collaboration, we were able to not only acquire the property, but then secure those jobs for the community. So, you know, it is not just walking path purpose. There's another purpose there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder McAlany.
This is in my district, and I have gotten a lot of feedback about this project, and they are 100%. I have not heard one person against this. They are very, very happy to have this employer improve this property and to add jobs, and for us to maybe even get not a walking path, but a road. The District Six, you know, anybody in Riverview and maybe portions of Forest Park would really relish a secondary road at one point and maybe do some development down there on the riverfront. So District Six will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All right. I'm not seeing anyone.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 9 to 2.
All right. Thank you. We are now moving. Thank you, Phil. All right. We are now moving on to item number 230405. This is a resolution from Capital Improvement and Street Maintenance approving the 2023 Alley Pavement Project Authorization to Let Bids. It looks like it failed in the committee, but we have a motion by Alder Henke and a second by Alder Denny. Alder Larson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This came to SISAM. It was kind of an odd thing. It was a paving project for this alley, and all of a sudden, the people that signed, all of a sudden, they don't want it paved. They're afraid of where the water is going to go, where it runs off. They don't want the expense of the pavement through the alley. And so this failed at SISAM. I expect it to fail here, because the people don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I was going to mention, too, even the petitioner that circulated the petition came to talk to us in SISAM and had thought better of it after the fact, not realizing some of the runoff issues that it may create for one resident who already had troubles with wet basement things and whatnot. So to put more hard surface in there was a serious detriment for her, and I don't think everyone was aware of that before this conversation began. So I think the entire SISAM Committee would appreciate it not passing here tonight, because that really is all of the public feedback that we had.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Henke.
Thank you. I motion for it, just like I did in SISAM, just so we can get a vote on it and get it moved on, but I won't be supporting it.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right. We're ready.
You may begin voting. Motion fails 0 to 11.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up is file number 220709. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the request of Ash Properties LLC Infuse at 180 East Wassa Avenue to extend the one-year occupancy deadline and modify the project plan. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. Any discussion? Not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much. All right. We're on to file number 230708. It's another resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the authorization to transfer 703 Fulton Street to Wassa Community Development Authority. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. Any discussion? Not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. File number 230709, a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving authorization to subordinate the city's loan with Nidas Holding Company LLC to Abbey Bank and SBA. I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Watson. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to file number 980412. It's a joint resolution from the Economic Development and Finance Committees approving First Amendment to the Development Agreement and Second Amendment to the master ground lease between City of Wassa and Federal Building Redevelopment Limited Partnership for Federal Building Lofts at 317 North First Street to allow for an additional loan from the city and related to Number Three budget modification. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Is there any discussion here? Okay. I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you. Next up is file number 221109. It is a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2023 budget modifications for Washington Street Sewer Siphon Project. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Rasmussen. Is there any discussion? I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Alder Larson. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to file number 221109A. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving 2023 budget modifications for the ambulance purchase. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Denny. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to file number 230706. This is a resolution from the Plan Commission amending the general development plan at 315, 319, and 325 North First Avenue to allow for transitional housing for at least 39 men and 20 women, and a commercial cushion and facility to feed up to 120 people in a planned unit development zoning district. I have a motion by Alder Herbst and a second by Alder Lukens. Is there any discussion? I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. Next up is a request to suspend the rules. This is 6B filing and 12A referral of resolutions. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. You are not allowed to discuss this one.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. So first up, and I might invite our transit director up to just give us a little brief on this, but it's file number 230710. It's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of two used buses from the City of Waukesha for $5,000. Maybe you could just give us a little brief.
Sure. So Matthew Rosenblum-Jones, the Director of Metro Ride. A little bit of background on this is we are essentially down by five buses. We had four buses that we purchased used from Kenosha in 2021. Those buses are now almost 20 years old. They are in very poor condition and would probably not pass a safety inspection. So we are in the process of disposing of those buses, because they are not suitable for another year of service. These are buses that we typically use for the school trippers, so they're seasonal. They do not get a lot of mileage, but even so, they have reached the end of their useful life and the end of their extendable useful life. So they are done. Last summer, on August of 2022, we had bus number 905 was T-boned by a tractor trailer, was damaged completely beyond repair. That bus also needs to be replaced. So essentially, we went through a long back and forth with the insurance company. They basically settled for the value of that bus. We're going to apply that value to this purchase, as well as the donation of the three buses from Duluth, which is the next item, and, you know, the costs of bringing them here, you know, sending drivers up to bring them down, any repairs, new tires, new wheels, new wheels, those sorts of in-service items that we'd have to do. So essentially, the reason that this is before City Council is the Federal Transit Administration requires a resolution from Metro Ride's governing body to receive the vehicles from another transit system, whether it's a donation or whether there's money exchanged. So this is simply a motion to satisfy the needs of the Federal Transit Administration.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Rasmussen. I do have a question here from Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I address them?
Absolutely.
And what are the conditions of these buses you're looking at and what's the lifespan expectancy?
So a transit bus is life spans defined by the Federal Transit Administration, or what's called useful life is about 12 to 14 years. But you can push that out to 20 years with good preventative maintenance practices. These buses are in the range of between, I would say, 13 and 14 years. I think the Waukeshas are slightly older. The applications that we're going to be using these buses for, they're not for a mainline service. They're for the school tripper service. So they will not accumulate quite as many miles as the other buses, which means that that combined with indoor storage, good preventable maintenance probably means we'll get several years of good service out of them. As far as the condition goes, we sent our senior mechanic to both Duluth and Waukesha to inspect the vehicles before we, you know, went down this process. They're in very good condition. And we're looking forward to many years of service. They're, all five of the vehicles are extremely well maintained and they will likely serve us well for many years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? All right. I think we're ready to vote on this.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
All right. Thank you. Next up is file number two, three, zero, seven, one, three. It's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of three used buses from the Duluth Transit Authority for $0.00. It looks like we have a motion from Alder Herbst and a second from Alder Rasmussen. Is there anything you'd like to add, Matthew?
I just want to add how thankful I am to the Duluth Transit Authority for being so generous. And they are one of the best properties in the country when it comes to maintenance. So these are excellent vehicles we're getting at, you know, an unbeatable price.
We will be sending our thank you card. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Alder Denny?
Yeah. And I think a thank you is deserved by our two, Matthew here, as well as the new director taking charge down there. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Matthew. Next up is file number two, two, one, one, zero, nine, B. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2023 budget modification for the purchase of a transit snowplow and minivan. This did pass at the committee just a little bit ago, five, zero. We have a motion by Herbst and a second by Lukens and and there's a replacement resolution on your desk. And Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. Just for clarification, our discussion in finance was that this particular item will just cover the plow truck and we're going to address the minivan at a later date. So the plow truck was what's available that they can get now and we're going to work on that first.
Okay. All right. It looks, I'm sorry.
So Alder, didn't you have a motion to amend? Was that your amendment?
That was my amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Since we have an amendment on the floor, is there anyone willing to second it?
So the amendment is just to strike minivan?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Alder Killian has seconded. So looks like we're in business, but we might wait just one second while Clerk Caitlin catches up. Okay. So are we voting on the amendment first and then the, okay. So right now, we're voting on the amendment and that is to strike the minivan. I don't see anyone waiting in the queue to speak, so I think we're ready to vote on the amendment.
John, did you mean to amend?
I know.
Okay.
We're going to ignore you.
Okay. You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
Alrighty. So now we have the motion as amended, approving the 2023 budget modification for the purchase of a transit snowplow. Any, any comments? I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up is file number two, two, one, one, zero, nine, C. It's a resolution from Finance Committee approving the transit facility study for local funding commitment. This also passed at Finance, five, zero. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Lukens. Any conversation on this? Maybe, do you want to just give us a brief quickly for the public?
Sure. So I think, you know, we historically have used a federal grant called the Buses and Facilities Grant to replace our vehicles. And there had been a plan to sort of modernize the fleet and there had been local funds set aside and future CIPs to do that. Unfortunately, in this last round of Buses and Facilities Awards, we were unsuccessful in receiving funding. The reason being, what we asked us to do was replace a conventional diesel with a conventional diesel. Out of 1,300 buses across the country that the federal government funded, only two were a conventional diesel to conventional diesel replacement. Essentially, the message that the Federal Transit Administration is saying is that if you want to use federal money to replace a bus, you need to request a hybrid or better. And I personally think that within a few years, that will probably be a battery bus will be the, the baseline. So our facility was built in 1979. It's a very old facility. The, there are needs to, that need to be looked at before we can determine whether it's right to put the investment that would be required for alternative fuels, whether it's hybrid technology, battery electric, or even some of the more emerging technologies like hydrogen. There's a lot of things we need to look at about that facility, know whether it's suitable. So this is a study from, that's kind, where the funds are administered through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. There's a local match, which is what's being discussed tonight. And what this would allow us to do would be the feasibility study, which is kind of the first step to do more advanced sort of engineering studies on that. But it would have sort of looked at whether or not the electrical grid could support it, the facility being as aged as it is, whether it can support it, whether the fact that it's in a floodplain is, is acceptable, or whether we need to look at a new site. It's essentially looking at, you know, it's, it's just basically a feasibility study. If what we want to do to that facility to modernize it is even feasible, possible, responsible, et cetera.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. Oh, Alder Larson. Sneaky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then where is your facility at now?
It's at 420 Plummer Street, which is kind of behind the McDonald's, just down the hill over there. So it's by, I think it's at Midwest Valves is next door and
The Dog Park.
That kind of area.
And my second question would be, as we're looking into moving forward with the new DPW facility, I'm just wondering if we could not incorporate the two into one, so to speak.
So that is a complicated question. And the reason being, we are, receive a lot of federal funding for operating. And the federal government is extremely strict on keeping transit money and other local money separate and including resources like a shared facility. There are ways to do it, but it does add further complications. You know, I think if it's, if it's the wish of the council and the Transit Commission, you know, we certainly could incorporate looking at that into part of this study. But I think it's a little premature to go down that route too much at this point. I think really what we want to look at is, is the existing facility suitable for essentially future needs. The other consideration is, you know, the potential location of a future DPW facility. What's great about our current site, aside from the fact that it's in a floodplain, is that it's, it's minutes from, you know, the transit center and that when a bus breaks down, I can have a replacement bus at that transit center in two or three minutes. If a driver is feeling ill and they need to be relieved, you know, any type of, of emergency or, out of the normal sort of operational situation, we can react very well to. And that would be another consideration with a transit facility, is how close you are to the nerve center of your transit network. So I think, you know, it, it's, it's an idea that probably just needs a little bit more consideration and discussion, but it, it may or may not be in the best interests of Metro Ride and the city to explore that. I think, you know, we just need to kind of think and talk about that some more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay. Oh, Alder Gisselman?
Yes. Thank, thank you. I, I get it, the fact that we need to be separate, federal transit. I get that with regard to where we move on into, into alternative energy. But, I mean, the city of Wassa has a lot of vehicles. And, and I think that whatever we do, as we, as we move forward, we should be thinking about police and fire because I think that as we go forward, that is going to be where we are going to be, I would hope. And I think that how that blends with, with this study, I don't know that. But I'm just saying that I think that this should, this city should be moving forward and at least starting, and this may be starting the city to think about how we deal with our vehicles and with regard to alternative energy. And I think that this may be a first step in, in how we view all of our vehicles in, in the city of Wassa. Thank you.
So just, just to clarify my point, I think, you know, it's, being that we get a lot of federal operating funding, where you could potentially get in trouble as a city is if there is an asset or an employee that splits their time between, say, transit maintenance and maintenance of other city vehicles. If it's not properly accounted for, that can be a major problem with the way that the Federal Transit Administration funds transit. And that's kind of what I was saying. But by asset, it could mean a tool. It could mean a lift. It could mean a facility as a whole. And I think, you know, we would have to explore how we would properly separate those things if we want to do it. Not that it's a reason, like Merrill does it, for example. You know, Merrill, their buses are maintained by DPW mechanics in a DPW facility who do police cars, fire trucks, garbage trucks, all those other things, and transit buses. But certainly, you know, as the transit system gets larger and the equipment gets more complicated and specialized, you lose some of that efficiencies that you get with a smaller system being housed in DPW. I, I think there's just a lot to this issue that just needs further exploration. But I, I do agree with your point. Yes.
I can also tell you that we have staff internally discussing this exact point. So we'll continue having that discussion, assuming this gets approved and we can continue having the discussion. Cool. All right. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is file number two, three, zero, seven, one, four. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing the application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Wisconsin Assessment Monies Program for the property at 110, 118, 120, 126, 130, 134, 138, 140, 146, 206, 212, 226, 230, 237, 241, 249, East Thomas Street by the city of Wassa. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did I interrupt Mr. Fiffright there or?
Ah, maybe, do you want to give an explanation briefly?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. And then do you mind? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So this is an opportunity as part of the Thomas Street project. The city staff has been working on this along with some of the local Alders in that area of bringing some of the vacant homes and finding some development for them. We did, went up with the neighborhood meetings in May and June. One of the things that we heard back from that is that, you know, environmental is a concern there. So Director Brody's been doing a lot of work on this and she's able to find the WHAM grants. And what this is, is an opportunity for site assessment at a higher level. This is, as far as I understand it, DNR funded, so there's no splitting the difference or anything on this. The money comes from the DNR and we're excited for the opportunity to be able to get a better idea before we start putting anything into the ground in these locations. But happy to answer any questions.
Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, I think this is a positive, that finally there'll be a kind of a thorough environmental investigation. I think the DNR at, at one point had recommended at least a phase one, but maybe a phase one and phase two. I had sat and listened to some of finance and I did hear one of Alder Denny's comments about just the ability for council and community to kind of be involved in the process. And I, I just had a couple questions about that. I know that with these assessment monies, there are kind of two buckets. And in one, the DNR directly contracts with service providers like consultants. In the other, the municipality does. Do we know in this case which one that will be?
The, the first one you said, where the DNR will contract directly with the contractors. You just feel like in talking with them, that that's the simplest way to go about this and also keep this moving in process.
Okay. Good. Great. And, you know, Mr. Thompson, who I saw mentioned in the memo, I think he manages most of the neighborhood sites from the DNR. So I'm sure, you know, he's got a lot of knowledge about them. The one question would be, and I, I don't think the city and the DNR would have any issue with this. I think they've both committed to environmental justice and kind of community-based participatory research is a key component of environmental justice. So Ms. Brodic had passed along just a few months ago, again, I think it was the AECOM study that had been done during the Thomas Street project at some point. And I think Mr. Lindman's not here. He would recall this. But one thing I noticed when I was re-reviewing that document is that some of the borings on the properties did show quote unquote fill material. And that's common. It, it can be from anywhere and it often is, you know, a variety of places. But one thing we've seen around the city, the mall site, the riverfront, 1300 Cleveland Avenue is very commonly, you'll see PAHs in Wassa in fill material. So that was one thing that wanted to make sure that that's in the testing set when the phase two goes along, just because it's so commonly found in fill. And then the second contaminant, because of 1300 Cleveland Avenue, was thallium, a heavy metal. And Mr. Lindman's aware of this one too. But when they did the heavy metal tests on 1300 Cleveland, they had found thallium in the soil, but it was not clear why. It could be just a background level, could be from some of the fill. They said it could be from aerial deposition. So I think given the uncertainty there and the proximity of these properties to that site relatively, that was just another one that based on information to date, I thought would be really useful. But that's really my only input on this. And hopefully that can be considered by the city and the DNR when this occurs.
Sure. I don't know, Randy, if you have the ability to say, can we, can we ask them to test for those items?
I don't know exactly what their process is, but I'm sure we can pass those comments along. Absolutely.
And, you know, and just to make an even more thorough and compelling case, then what I will do as the District Three Alder is I will extract the records from the DNR files that show these contaminants in nearby properties and then compile those and send them to you so that you can provide them to the DNR. And I think at that point, there'll be no reasonable objective reason why they would not test for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Denny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question, maybe, if I may ask of Mr. Killian?
Do you have an objection to that?
No, Madam Chair, if you're fine.
That's fine.
You use the term community-based environmental research, I believe, is what I heard. Could you expound on that?
Yes. So it's kind of a jargon, term, community-based participatory research. And it's just a lot of jargon for the basic premise that involving the community in environmental research from the planning to later stages is not only often more effective in getting better data, but it also is very inclusive. And, you know, the EPA is very big into this right now as, as a part of, with impacted communities, just having people involved. And I had just heard a story about this recently and it's kind of common sense and it's really neat. You know, you get people that have lived in a neighborhood for decades or that, you know, they walk around it every day. So really, they're the eyes and ears on the ground commonly. So sometimes just that primary observation can lead to things that can lead to good research questions and, and help drive questions and testing. So.
Thank you. Good. Alder Gisselman?
Yes. Thank you. I have a question. This, this came to Finance Committee. This, this came to Finance Committee. I didn't see any monies as opposed to maybe CISM or another standing committee of the City Council. I, I, I need to understand why it came to Finance as opposed to CISM or, or Public Health and Safety, or Economic Development, or Economic Development was involved with some of the other things with regard to Thomas Street, and, and with a standard with a, I'm sure Finance, the Finance Committee will be alert to the timeline and the developments with regard to this project, but, you know, another Economic Development Committee with, with regular reports with regard to how this is developing and the reporting and the end result, the, this neighborhood has undergone a lot of, I would call, stress with, and just lately with the, with the, with the, the neighborhood meetings with regard to what kind of units do you want to see in this, in this neighborhood? And, and, and I think that maybe Economic Development would be that place, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, so a lot of it has to do with the timing requirements of getting this grant submitted, and the city requirements for, if they're, if we're applying for a grant, it has to go through the Finance Committee, if I'm getting that right?
Right, so council approved a grant policy last fall, I think it was late last fall, and really was to try to help us do a better job of managing the grants. If you recall, you know, there was some controversy during the last presidential election where communities accepted election grants without taking it to their boards, and it kind of turned into a political issue, so it's to try to prevent those types of things as well, and to be transparent to the community when we are applying for grants, because oftentimes there is a local share involved, not always, but it's really to meet the requirements of the grant policy.
Well, I just would hope that there would be some reporting back to the city Standing Committee, the City Council, so we know what's, what's happening and the end results. And I, that way, the, the neighborhood can see what's happening, and, and, and I really feel strongly that that really has to happen.
Absolutely. Yeah, we feel the same way. The Economic Development Committee is the main committee that's going to be working through this process. I believe the next step in the process, if you remember, there was the May-June, or April-May, I don't even remember what time it was, it feels like summer's going by so quickly, but there was meetings with the different neighborhoods, and we'll be going back to them within the next month or two. So we'll be continuing to interact with those neighborhoods and keeping everybody in the loop, so, but I appreciate it. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think this is a positive also. I am glad that it came to Finance, though, because also tied up in these infill projects is ARPA funding that carries a spend-down requirement and a finite timeline, so the sooner we get moving, the better. Originally, when we had talked about infill housing there, we wanted the requirement that, you know, none of these homes have basements because we didn't want to disturb that soil. So this actually allows us to go a step further and figure out why, what's in there, what might need to come out, maybe just not making a basement isn't enough, and so we'll get those results, but I do think that it's appropriate that it was before Finance, even without a local match, because one of the things that the Finance Committee looks at under the new grant policy is whether or not that grant has the ability to, when it expires, does it present ongoing or continual budget pressure with whatever you're getting the grant for, especially if it's a grant to hire employees or something? You need to look down the road and figure out, it's great that you got a grant today, but what happens when it runs out, and that's what we have to keep in mind as well. So to be consistent, we're also looking at that perspective with any grant. So this one is a singular purpose, but in general, the new grant policy certainly made sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. We are now at the end of our agenda, where if there's anybody here who didn't get an opportunity for public comment or suggestion, you may approach the podium. I'm not seeing that happening, so I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Watson and a second by Hanky. All in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, this is adjourned.